All right, I'd like to call this October 22nd Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I believe we're going to start off with Jimmy Galavan, our Student Council President. Welcome, Jimmy.
Good evening. So there are a few things to talk about, just about what's happening in the high school and everything. So in terms of 21st century knowledge and skills in student life, fall has been ramping up as classes continue and our first quarter is going to be ending this next Friday, November 1st. Additionally, the Somers Musical Company is hosting their annual Somers On Book Disney Edition this Thursday at 6:30 PM. This event will feature, you know, students from the high school performing musical acts on their own, you know, inspired by like Broadway musicals or on Disney. And then additionally, the new tennis courts at SHS's lower fields are almost finished and they'll be open within the next few weeks. I haven't actually seen them yet, but I know that...
If you go to our website, you can actually see the picture as soon as you pull up the website now, it's beautiful.
Oh, okay. I'm excited to see them. And in terms of social, emotional, and physical wellness, counselors have continued to help students, you know, throughout all grades, preparing college admissions, helping with classes, and just general issues. And then additionally, counselors are teaching lessons in health class focused on helping students to develop their ability to manage emotions in challenging environments, and these lessons will continue throughout the fall. Additionally, in global citizenship, on November 16th, the Student Council will host a brand-new Fall Ball Dance at SHS. Students will be able to enjoy the music, food and drink, and the company of their fellow students. Admission will be $20 ahead of time and $25 at the door. And then Student Council also has continued to help the SHS and Somers community as a whole. Recently, Student Council members helped to lead tours for the class of 1984, who recently came back and visited Somers High School for their 40th anniversary. Those are all the reports I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our first public comment period. Is anyone here to make a public comment? Okay, then moving on to our central office report where we have our annual audit report.
Yep, so tonight we have Alan Cassay from O'Connor Davies to present on the financial statements and audit report for the 2324 school year. Later on in the business agenda, you'll have the acceptance of that audit and corrective action plan, and Alan will go into a little bit of the, some of the numbers from 2324.
Thank you. Good evening. Jeff Shaver, the engagement partner, previously met with the Audit Committee to go over the financial statements in detail. Tonight I'm going to give you a summary of that. So that's the agenda we're going to go over. The required communications, look at the 2024 general fund revenues expenditures and change in the budget, the general fund fund balance, and a summary of your debt service expenditures and your standings and other funds. Included in the required communications is the independent auditor's report. We issued what's known as an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. There's a report on internal control of a financial reporting and a report on compliance for each major federal program. That has to do with the single audit. There were no findings on either one of those reports. The extra classroom activities report was also issued, and there are some required communications to those charged with governance, that being the board. Management's responsibilities include selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies, responsible for fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, and responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal control of a financial reporting. The auditors are responsible for forming and expressing an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit, which I indicated was an unmodified opinion. There were no difficulties encountered during the audit, and there were no disagreements with management. Jeff told me the audit went very well. The finance department, Chris and his staff, were very well prepared, and there were no issues. Here's a summary of the 2024 general fund revenues expenditures compared to the budget. Going left to right, you have the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, the encumbrances, which are applicable to the appropriations, and then the variance with the final budget. The revenues, the original budget was $105 million. The final budget remained the same, and the actual came in at $107,992,000, generating a positive budgetary variance of $2.3 million. On the expenditure side, the original budget was $106 million, was increased slightly to $107,196,000, and the actual came in at $105,458,000. You had encumbrances of $242,000. Encumbrances are basically purchase orders that were placed prior to June 30th, for which you haven't received the goods and services as of June 30th. So that money is encumbered, and it automatically rolls forward into the 2425 expenditure budget. That generated a positive budgetary variance of almost $1.5 million. So the excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures, the actual was $2.5 million, and a positive budgetary variance of almost $3.8 million. The other financing sources and uses, which includes the transfers in and transfers out, there was a transfer in from the debt service for $100,000, and the transfers out consisted of a transfer to the special aid fund and a transfer to the capital projects fund. The net change in fund balance, $2,101,000, when added to your fund balance at the beginning of the year, excuse me, of $14.6 million. You ended the year with a total fund balance of $16,753,000. Okay, this is a summary of the general fund fund balance. The fund balance analysis, it's a five-year lookback. We refer to these categories as buckets. The first one being non-spendable was $46,451. Restricted, these are the reserves either established by the board or legally established. You have a reserve for your tax suraries of $5.9 million. The reserve for employee benefit accrued liability, the vacation and sick accrued by employees when they retire. The retirement contribution, that includes the employee retirement and the teacher's retirement reserve, $2.9 million. And then your future capital projects is $1.8 million. So your total reserves are $10,781,000. Below that, you have your assigned fund balance, your purchases on order, the encumbrances which we mentioned, and in the current year, you're taking $1,250,000 out of your total fund balance and using it to balance the 2425 budget. Okay? You can see across the board, the last time you did that was in 2020. And then you have your unassigned fund balance of $4,432,000, and that's equal to 4% of your 2025 appropriations. This is the schedule of your debt service. You have four bonds outstanding, $30 million and $95,000. You have an energy performance contract of $8.2 million, and finance purchase debt. If you look on the bottom of the page in the total column, the combined principal and interest that's due in 2025 is $6.2 million. That number is less than 6% of your 2025 appropriations, which is considered generally very good. Okay? And then the next page we have are other funds. You have the special aid fund, which is restricted from having a fund balance. The capital projects fund had a fund balance of $7.1 million. The school lunch fund, almost $400,000. The special purpose fund, where your trusts are, $390,000, and the debt service fund of $352,000. All positive fund balances. And the analysis of what's contained in there, the capital projects fund, that's restricted solely for capital projects. The school lunch fund, you have $13,000 worth of inventory. The rest is assigned for the school lunch fund. The special purpose fund is all restricted. The debt service fund is restricted for debt service, meaning it can only be used to pay the principal and interest on the existing debt. And the total of all those other fund balances are $8,245,000. And that's basically it. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? So, in other words, everything looks great.
Everything was very good, yes.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have some question. I don't know whether, you don't have to answer if it's a wrong question, okay? Basically, I want to ask you a sort of general question after I read so many of these numbers. First question is that are you, you did mention about on the, under the OPEB, OPEC consideration...
Other post-employment benefits?
Yeah.
Yes.
And our long-term liability or responsibility, whatever you call it, is high. In your opinion, as auditor, is any suggestion that you would like to make to us as a school district?
Okay, on page 35, I don't know if you have the financial statement...
Yeah, I don't have the...
But you have the total liability at the end of the year of $161 million for the other post-employment health benefits?
Right.
Okay? But if you, when you get a chance...
No, I know the numbers. I'm asking whether you have any opinion as what we should...
There's really nothing you can do. Reason being is the only way to fund this liability is to put the money into an irrevocable trust. Such a trust does not exist in New York State, which means that you, the liability, when GASBY, the Government Accounting Standards Board, first came out with this pronouncement to record this liability, it was only for the retirees. It was an actuarial analysis of all your existing retirees at a point in time and what the liability would be to pay their health insurance from that point in time until they expired or died.
Then let me ask whether...
And they revised it.
Okay. The second question then is, have you audited other schools that you have an opinion whether this number versus our budget is a sort of a norm, or is something that we should look into?
The number is generally excessively high, and I will tell you one thing. In this financial statement, the first two pages are on the full accrual basis, which includes all your long-term liabilities and your capital assets and so forth. There isn't one municipality, whether it's a school district, city, town, county, or village, that when they issue debt and they have a bond rating call with either Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's, is the full accrual statements ever discussed. Okay? So in your budget, you account for the retirees' health insurance for the next fiscal year. Last year is about $5.2 million. So every year you budget for the expense that you're actually going to pay out. This is a pronouncement issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board, and every municipality has to follow it. Okay, there is, unfortunately, in New York State, they do not, they do not have an irrevocable trust, and even if they did, to fund a liability to the tune of $161 million would be rather difficult.
So you're saying in a real sense, it's kind of a fictitious number in our report that we have to account for, but it's not something that we're actually really liable for?
It does not affect your budget. It does not affect your operations, either in the general fund or any of the other operating funds. It's a number that the Government Accounting Standards Board, when they originally came out with these two statements, GASBY Statement Number 34, the intent was if you're an investor looking to buy bonds and you wanted to purchase bonds from a municipality versus a commercial entity, by including these two financials, these two pages, the full accrual statements, you could make an apple-to-apple comparison. But the bottom line is, it does not affect your operations at all. It's, for the most part, informational disclosures. I hope that helps.
Could I ask you another question then? The amount of debt we have, is that a norm among many other school districts, or you think we...
I think it's probably on the low end of a lot of the school districts. As I did mention, it's less than 6% of your budget, which is good. So you are managing your debt very well, and I think one issue is coming due relatively soon.
Yeah, in the next couple of years, and that's why we've talked about the next bond project, bringing on that debt as this debt is expiring.
Right. So that's generally what happens when the old debt expires, new debt is issued, so you can maintain a level debt, and it's included in your budget, it'll be level, no, you know, ups and downs.
It affects the property tax calculation as well as other things, so yeah.
Exactly.
And final question, okay? Some of the debt that are higher, have higher interest, some are lower interest. In your opinion, that should we go try to refinance or do something about the higher interest debt service?
Well, the only thing you could do, whenever you issue a bond, in the official statement which accompanies the bond, in that statement, there's a paragraph or page that has optional redemption provisions, which tells you when the bonds could be redeemed. So your financial advisor, they would take a look at that, and if there is a savings to be had when those bonds are able to be called, then you could do the refunding. I just said a refunding today, but for a commercial entity.
Yeah, okay. That perhaps is our internal question we discuss.
You have to look at your official statements and see when the bonds are callable, if they would generate a savings or not.
Any other questions from anyone?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and that brings us to our next element of excellence, social, emotional, and physical wellness. And I believe Phil Kavanaugh is going to...
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this time tonight to not only explain, but also to celebrate our wellness supports for students. Can we blow that up? While our focus tonight is primarily on the work of our mental health professionals, there are so many amazing people and programs in the Somers schools and in the Somers community that also contribute to our, supporting our kids' mental health that I really would be remiss in not mentioning. I would never be able to mention them all, but it's important to note that there are many hands in this, from our physical education and health classes, to family and consumer science lessons, to programs like Recess Refresh at the elementary schools. There's so much happening every day. And when I say that we should celebrate the systems and programs that we've established, it's important to be aware that similar to how other districts have looked to us for academic structures, other districts have also looked to us for SEL programs, ranging from inquiries about our elementary wellness staffing, to our social-emotional screening, and to systems, our systems for collecting student feedback on our DBT programs. So ideally, when we finish tonight, your goal is that you be able to envision yourself explaining our student wellness structures and programs to someone else. And most importantly, you'll be able to explain why we do what we do to support student wellness. I'll give you a little bit more explanation about that whole envisioning part in just a little bit, leave you hanging. Begin with, why do we do this work? I've heard, some of you may have heard me share the next story before, so please bear with me. This past summer, I was at a barbecue. One of the dads commented, and it came across almost as a proclamation, that we needed to stop already with all the mental health stuff and focus on the basics of math and reading. My first thought was that this statement should have been put to us as a question rather than a point of fact. In other words, why do we focus so much on mental health now? And I think that is such an important question that we need to answer. The simplest perspective is that our kids are growing up in a completely different world. Even as adults, we're living in a different world, and maybe still growing up in it. As much as we have, as much access as we have information and as many technical tools as we have to communicate, we're ironically more isolated from each other than ever. From a biological perspective, we now have the ability to experience incredible spikes in dopamine, that's the feel-good neurotransmitter, instantaneously, with minimal to no effort. Unfortunately, a trough in dopamine always follows a spike, and a faster and more unnatural spike the deeper the trough. And for a developing brain that's learning how to wire itself, this is especially challenging. For kids over the last decade or so, this has translated to a near doubling of rates of depression and anxiety. Girls are especially vulnerable and have seen the most dramatic spikes. But boys are not immune. Researcher and author Jonathan Haidt points out the dramatic decline in boys' ER visits for broken bones. And now, while the decline in broken bones is great, this has sadly been overcome by suicide rates among boys. Teenage boys are now on par with 50-year-old men for ER visits. And as a 50-year-old man myself, that's unsettling. 50-plus. Two notable global changes that Haidt points out are the release of the forward-facing camera on the iPhone and the launch of Instagram, both came in 2010. We could go on, talk about significant mental health challenges that extend to populations like our veterans or law enforcement, and we could dig deeper into the research on how we got here. But our focus tonight is what steps we've taken here in Somers to best support our kids and to focus on the world that they're growing up in now. All right, we can move to the next slide. All right. The most significant change we've begun this year, really started last year, is our teaming structures. Each student that walks through the doors of the Somers schools now has a team to support them. Those teams consist of school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, and we also have student assistance counselors at both the middle school and the high school. These teams work together through the whole Child Success Team. This is a team that forms, that comes together every week. Actually, right now at the secondary, it's every other week. And essentially, you have this team of individuals who are looking out for each student as they enter the schools. What this has resulted in at the elementary level is that we've had more than a doubling of our Tier One lessons, our Tier One intervention lessons, and at the secondary level, more proactive, timely, and comprehensive support for each student. This also means we have something called an early warning system that we utilize in Infinite Campus. This gives us the ability to be able to see if a student is missing work well before grades come out, well before quarterly grades come out, and lets these wellness teams be able to work more collectively and collaboratively with teachers to create earlier interventions. Tiers of support are broken down, as you can see from above, and we'll go, oh, and I don't want also, although not a formal member of our team, someone else that was introduced, I believe it was last year, was her start, her first start, and we had stolen this idea from a SEL conference we went to at Harvard University, where they, where a school district advertised that they have this position of a family liaison. We were able to use our Drug-Free Communities Grant to hire this person. They are to introduce every new family, welcome every new family to the district, with a particular emphasis on our special ed and E&amp;L families. We can go to the next slide. So Tier One interventions. This is what every student gets. As I mentioned, at the elementary level, we're in a much better position now, because previously, what would happen is that when you had just one person to be able to attend to crisis situations, as you can gather from the data that I referred to just a little earlier, we have far more student crises and challenges that we're managing. This allows the one person to be able to continue with their scheduled lessons to deliver those Tier One intervention lessons to our students, while the other person maintains the challenges. Where we had been at was that that person who might have been scheduled to deliver those lessons was routinely getting pulled and had to keep canceling those lessons rather than delivering them. So these structures now allow us to do that. We start off at the elementary level with a responsive classroom, and again, this is something that everybody gets. Responsive classroom operates from a foundation that in order to be successful in and out of school, students need to learn a set of social and emotional competencies, cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, and a set of academic competencies, academic mindset, perseverance, learning strategies, and academic behaviors. And this is a part, the elementary level is a part of every student's everyday classroom experience. So we follow along in the biggest, one of the biggest things we do from both within each elementary building and then from PRIMOs to SIS to the middle school to the high school, focus on transitions. And each transition, we have transitional meetings for each student to ensure that there's, that they're safely handed off to the next team and the next school, so that they know how to best to support each student. As students go up in grade levels, there's more usage of Zones of Regulation. That is a program that teaches emotional regulation skills, teaches kids how to handle social situations. We also have Second Step. Zones of Regulation is where you would identify, especially at the earliest level, where you identify the emotion you're experiencing. Most of the research says that most adults have difficulty being able to find a word to accurately describe the emotion they're experiencing. So if you're a kindergartner, you could imagine how much more challenging that would be. Once those, once the students are able to identify those emotions, the Second Step program offers us strategies and programs and tools to be able to teach kids and develop their own toolbox of how to regulate themselves. It's not the only things that we use, but these are our major programs. Our wellness staff routinely pulls from other ideas that they see that they can incorporate to better help each student, because not everything is, every one tool is going to fit every student. So sometimes we have to get creative. We also have JCK, the Self-Care Program at the high school. This is a program that every ninth grader is exposed to. JCK program is based on, it's a local person from Dobbs Ferry, whose best friend, when he was in high school, took his life. So he tells the story, he tells the story of his own mental health challenges, and it's unbelievably impactful when you hear an adult, and especially, he's maybe in his early twenties, so he's not that far off from our kids, when he relays to them and is very painfully honest about his own mental health struggles, you can hear a pin drop, and he has a very attentive audience, needless to say. And then they break out, they have, they do the presentation, and we all know that a single presentation really doesn't do a lot, can open kids' eyes for a moment, but then he follows up the next few days, along with a friend who also talks about his mental health challenges, and they break it, they do many lessons with our students, so that they can all explore, and the goal being not just to talk about challenges, but how do you manage those, best manage those challenges. Along those same lines, and you heard Jimmy Galavan talking about this, the lessons that are going on in DBT Step A. DBT is dialectical behavior therapy. It just means that two things, two equals, two truths can exist at the same time in the same place, and how you manage that. There's a lot of different skills that kids learn. As a Met fan, I practice radical acceptance and realize that we can look to next season. And these programs go on in grade six, eight, and 10. There's lots of different strategies that our students use in multiple lessons, and we have, we cycle them in and scaffold those lessons from, in grade six, eight, and 10. And I really am grateful to our wellness team teachers, that's like Mr. Cleary. We also have Mr. Arnett here, Mr. DeSanto, and Ms. Gwelly through our FACS, who all collaborate, and they've also been trained in DBT Step A, which is a very foundational level of DBT. I can't tell you, this is one of the, been the most satisfying things that I've done in my professional career, is seeing this roll out. Seeing not only our staff build their own confidence in being to deliver this and refine it, but the feedback that we collect from students is overwhelming. Things like, and just like, these are very simple things, but I've used dialectics a lot to increase understanding between myself and the people that I care about. These are anonymous, so the kids have nothing to lose by being as critical as they want. And the way they talk about how they use it in their everyday is just, like I said, just so powerful. I feel like I now apply this every day, and it helps me to look at a situation in multiple ways, not just the way that I want to see it. If any of you has a teenage child at home, that is an enlightening perspective, to say the least. Obviously, aside from the social-emotional, there are also very practical academic work that we do. Last year, I'd ask you to take a guess at how many individual application, supportive application materials we'd filed, but we'd be here all night and Nancy might have my head. Little over 3,000. So it's an unbelievable amount of work both, on both ends. And that's where the teams are really coming in, where our social workers and psychologists can bolster support, and where our school counselors can focus on both that and on the academic part. Okay? All right, so then we look at, those were all Tier Two lessons, sorry, Tier One lessons that everyone is exposed to. Tier Two lessons or interventions are where the, for students who are having a little bit more challenge with those... bit more challenge with those Tier One lessons that we teach them, they still need extra support. So that could be, a lot of times it's small group counseling, it could be one-to-one counseling. Small groups are predominantly, those could be like, you see, there are social skills groups, changing families groups. There's a newcomers group here at the middle school, self-care group. But a lot of that is being able to better engage in, interact in a social setting, understand how to respond to different social cues, and they can work more intensively in those Tier Two interventions. Also, too, one of the people that we rely on at the high school is our Student Life Coordinator, who's a big help and plays a role within our whole Child Success Team as well. Go to the next page. Tier Three then, so you have the Tier One, the Tier Two, which is, and then, as you can imagine, it's just a different level of intervention. That's where we are working with our students who are not responding well to those other interventions. A lot of times this could be, we have the True North program here at the middle school is a good example of that, where students having a difficult time transitioning back into the classroom and other interventions we're finding are not successful. Sometimes that could be for a student who was placed out of District Two or who was out of District due to a hospital placement, could be for physical or mental health challenges. Most of the hospital placements we've, we work with now are for mental health challenges. Along with this, this is not with respect to the tiering, but separate from that is our social-emotional survey. Last year, we were using Covitality, which right now, because the company that was delivering Covitality is a free survey, it's a survey that we vetted and we found that was going to be most effective because it brought student voice in to such a degree. The company, Mosaic, that delivered it has been experiencing some challenges, I'll say that as kindly as possible. So right now, we're looking to another vendor. Like I said, the survey itself is free, but they were delivering the survey electronically and formulating all the responses and putting them there together in reports for us. So right now, our hope is that we can have a spring screener in place. Right now, we're researching other options. Well, we looked last year in terms of the group, one of the best parts from my perspective about the, using a social-emotional screener is that it gave us an opportunity to measure growth. In my world and in working with mental health, it's very difficult to measure growth. Here, what you're looking at is the improvement among struggling students. So struggling students would mean that they are indicating that they are experiencing a high level of psychological distress at the time that they took the survey. Doesn't mean that that's who they are, but at the time that they took the survey. So we took just the cohort of the students who were struggling from the fall, took those same kids, and looked at them in the spring. And what you see there is the rate of increase at each building. So there's, at each building, you could see 61, 71, and 68% prospectively increase from those students who are struggling. So that, to me, is, you know, really validating, especially for our folks in the work that they were doing with each of those students. And on the right hand, you see the growth in connectedness. That was a big target that we were looking at. And one of the questions in that survey, and it's actually a series of questions that comes together with a rating, is how connected are these students? And in each instance, as you can see there, we've seen some significant gains in those students reporting a greater sense of connectedness, which obviously is improving their mental health and is improving their overall well-being. Okay. And when, just another point, too, now we send this out in our communications, but when a student is struggling, it's a very simple formula. We pull students in, our wellness team, a wellness team member will pull a student in, we'll talk to them about it, sort through what it is they might be challenged with. It could be, from some of the conversations, it could be something as grave as there was a death in the family or a separation, and the family just didn't think to tell us about it, and, or it could be something as simple, I say simple for a middle schooler, it's their world, if their friend group had, if there was a falling out with their friend group. Ultimately, what we want to do is pinpoint what it is, is that the heart of the struggle? And then call the parent and work together in partnership with the parent to figure out, how can we put together a good plan to support him or her? All right. We can go to the next page. So I mentioned earlier, when I said the envisioning part, this is where it comes into our executive functioning training. We had all staff received a, received two hours of introductory training. It was virtual, so you get what you get from virtual training. The goal was simply to give everyone a common language to understand executive functioning. And then last year, we did in-service trainings at both SIS and PRIMOs. This year, we've already started at the middle school for this fall, and in the spring, we're going to be having an in-service at the high school. When I said that envisioning work, there's lots of different facets to executive functioning, but one of the most basic that we try to incorporate into our instruction and that we work with a lot of kids on is just time. And people always say the word "time management," and once you learn more about executive functioning, even that phrase seems very stale. Time management, it's about understanding how you utilize your time. If any of you also have an adolescent who maybe can't figure out how much time it would take them to get in the shower, to get ready for school, to get out the door, and what that should look like, that's what executive functioning is about, what, why, I talked to you about before, about envisioning yourself telling somebody else in the community about what supports we offer. That's what they would call playing with future time. A lot of kids with executive functioning challenges, a lot of adults with executive functioning challenges do not do that routinely. They do not envision what they have to do next, and that makes it very difficult for them to manage their time. And like I said, that's something that we continue to work with consultant on, and we are continuing to offer those in-service trainings for our staff. Shifting gears a little bit, last year was our first year with the middle school mentoring program. This was a very well-received program where we have eighth-grade students who are mentoring sixth-grade students, building community, modeling for them good behavior. Our eighth graders have really taken to it. It's also to remove social isolation within the school. It's refreshing to see kids talking to each other so much. And then last year, we had, it was, I think we had 63 mentors last year, and this year we're already up to 75 mentors. And each year that we go through it, as you can imagine, we learn a little bit more about what we need to do and how we can do it a little bit better. We also started at the very end of the school year last year, I think a lot of folks missed it, and so we sent out another communication early this fall, and now we're really starting to see a lot of traffic. We, for the first time, have school-based clinical services. So this is someone who's not employed by the school district, who is at the middle school and the high school, who operates similar to a private therapist. She's not, like I said, she's not paid for us. She was initially brought here through a grant that Student Assistance Services applied for us, and there's actually an insurance exchange there. So you call down to an office in White Plains, and they set up the appointment for her, either at the middle school or at the high school. She's at each building two days a week. And she's also Spanish-speaking as well, too, so it really does address a lot of challenges that a lot of parents are facing in terms of being able to find support, find readily available and affordable support. And then this year, we're continuing with Cewak, that's the Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Council. Probably the biggest gear shift that we're having is we're looking for that group to break out into smaller groups and focus on some concentrated areas, things like, things like the, we're talking about social media. We're talking about, we call it digital citizenship, but I think it's more about safety with digital media. We are executive functioning and other mental health programs that we have within the schools, social-emotional learning programs. Each group is breaking off, and they're going to try to work on that individually with the hope that one of those groups, as we develop some different ideas for the spring, that would be the focus of our Wellness Summit. Traditionally, we've had the Wellness Summit in the fall every year. We decided this year, we want this group to be able to develop that and make a plan for it for the spring. Then, of course, so much of, as I mentioned at the start, of student wellness is being involved. That was going back to that connectedness piece. If you look at the overwhelming number of student athletes that we have and how much they learn, any individual can learn through athletics or any club or extracurricular involvement, you can get similar experiences, those who are not on the field but are also doing things like science research, there's a whole community there. And certainly, our theater productions, there's a great quote there below from one of our theater students that really speaks about how much this has impacted her experience in school and built all the bonds that she currently has. And what we learn more than anything else, and what research over time consistently supports, is that SEL support for students improves, objectively improves measures such as grades and test scores. So all these things put together, and like I said at the start, I would never be able to mention everything that happens within our schools. And also, too, there's, has to be a nod to the community, too. I look at all the teams and programs that we start from when kids are little, and all that contributes to supporting, creating healthy networks and supporting our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Questions for Mr. Capital?
Phil, can I ask you a question? I think, you know, you have probably the toughest job to show the excellence of, you know, we always say we have excellence report in three different areas. I think the social, you know, emotional wellness and fitness is probably difficult to show in terms of indicators. What do you have in mind, sort of, some indicators such as maybe attendance of something or doing this and that? What are the indicators could show us that our student body, you know, from wellness, from emotional, you know, physical wellness is advancing or is showing that we're doing, you know, excellent job?
Right. You saw the, those measures from the social-emotional screener to show the kids who are moving from struggling to connected. That, I think, is a real positive measure. We could always look at things like grades, we could always look at things like attendance, and certainly, I think, when we have interventions, and I mentioned that early warning system, that's using a lot of data to be able to look at behavior, grades, and attendance and see where can we intervene. I think what you'd find is that, having worked a long time in this field, is that most people who work with mental health are also incredibly humble. They would not make good salespeople, because you would otherwise say, well, that student is going, is now attending because of the efforts that I exerted, when we know that when something like, that may be the case, it may be something about the work that they did with that student, an idea they presented, a tool that they gave them to regulate, to get through the day. And we know that there are always multiple people who have, in the school system, who have touches on kids. One of the most effective things that we do, I think, as a team, and when I say as a team, I mean K through 12, is that we work with teachers, we make sure they understand the kids who are most vulnerable, and we make sure that they have, that they have awareness of how to manage some of the most challenging situations that they have.
So are we, are we doing some tracking for K to 12 in some way that, in your capacity, you have overall picture that we track from K to 12, that the progression is getting better, better, you know, semester to semester, year to year?
Yeah. I don't know if I would use the word "track," because I also do believe that a lot of this can be, and as any of us who have had children know, that as you grow up, a lot of times, how you are doing in terms of your own wellness can be fluid, can be changing, and there can be different life events that change it. So I don't know if I would use the word "track," but certainly, as I mentioned before, when we have transitions between buildings, if we have a student who has had a series of challenges or historically has been challenged in different ways, we do it with academic as well. That's the whole MTSS umbrella, that you're looking at the academic and the social-emotional. We always will, from building to building, say, okay, this student is having some struggles, they have care meetings at the elementary level, transition meetings between middle school and high school, as well as through SIS in the middle school, to make sure that we are identifying those students who need the most support. And specifically, not only that they need support, but what specific, what specifically works for that student. And I think in that way especially, we do a uniquely good job.
In terms of a special ed, IEP type of thing, do you think your overall program could have some measurement indicators that we can sort of point to?
Well, this is, I am not, I am not the special ed director, but...
I mean, we certainly like to see IEP number drops in the sense of, we sort of moving the students into, you know, not dependency.
Yeah, it's a little bit apples and oranges, and, you know, obviously, we don't, we, yes, we want students to eventually be able to manage more independently, and at the same time, we can't artificially drive down a student's disabilities. And certainly, nor would we want to ever take that position. We always want to be in a position of best supporting our kids in whatever needs they have. There's a lot we could do to artificially change numbers, and I don't think anyone in this district is of that mind, which is one of the reasons why we're such a great district.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, I think, yeah, I think every student is gonna maybe potentially, every student who has a learning disability may always have that learning disability, and there's nothing that we can do to change that. I was just gonna comment on the, we just, Harry and I just attended the NISBA convention this past few days, and there was some great sessions that I'll definitely share you on. I definitely had one where we were talking about designing learning spaces for the social-emotional learning, so I'd love to share that with you guys. And I talked to one counseling place, too, and they were very intrigued by the fact that we actually have in-service or in-house counseling services in the secondary level. So they were very impressed with all that we have, so, thank you.
She's actually a Somers alum as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Phil. The next component in our Forward in Excellence Report will be on 21st Century Knowledge and Skills, and that will be at the November 12th board meeting. That will be the third component in our Forward in Excellence Report.
Okay. This brings us to our superintendent search update. Just to update everyone, I want to thank everyone for filling out the surveys, hopefully, that closed on the 20th, as well as attending the focus groups on the 16th and 17th with our recruiting search firm. So upcoming next week, we'll have October 30th, a special board of ed meeting with the search firm where they can basically disaggregate all the data for us, and we can talk about, discuss, and as well as approve our specifications for the superintendent qualifications of what we're looking for in our next candidate. So we look forward to that. Hopefully, everyone can come on October 30th, 7:00 PM, right here in the SMS library. It'll also be recorded, I believe, as well, so that we're, just as always, but it'll, the only thing on the agenda will be the search firm discussion on that. So there'll be a presentation.
Amanda, before that, are we gonna see some of these data posted on our webpage, the search webpages?
So there's certain data that us as a board will get, but then there will be a PowerPoint presentation that we will get from the search firm before the meeting, yes.
Yeah.
That will be public, but there's gonna be stuff that's not public as well.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Financial reports, acceptance of warrant reports, statement of revenues, treasuries report, budget status report.
So moved.
No, I think we just have to accept it.
Yep.
Resolved, now we move on to minutes. Resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of minutes of the meetings of 9/24/24, 9/25/24, and 10/8/24, hereby approve same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have our personnel consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education, here, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings, as listed on the attached memo, hereby approve same. The cost of these services are contained budget in the 24-25 budget. Please refer to the CSE/CPSE meetings.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay. Our business consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chris, sorry, I probably should have asked you before we approved it, but anything that you wanted to point out?
Just from the presentation tonight, the closing the books on the 23-24 school year as the board accepts the audit report and corrective action plan, and then also approving the budget planning calendar for the next year's budget for 25-26.
Chris, that reminds me, in the report, they said they are, they are not commenting on the method you use to, you know, sort of prepare the data result. What does that mean? I mean, your method must be a standard accounting method, right?
Sure. Yeah, I'm not reinventing the wheel when it comes to accounting. They're just not coming in and, let me, I'm trying to think of an easy way to, they're not looking at every single way we account for things, they're just looking at the general, do the numbers seem appropriately stated? How we got there is, you know, again, all kind of the, with generally accepted accounting How we got there is, you know, again, all kind of with generally accepted accounting principles and standards that we follow from New York State. So they're not coming in and just looking at every single transaction that we're doing. They're just looking at it in totality and also looking at some of just our larger, say, expenditures and revenues, and they're not driving down to the very minute, you know, day-to-day recording of some of these revenues and expenditures.
Yeah. Also, they said something about they're not commenting the effectiveness of the methods you use and so on. I don't know whether, you know, somehow, this sentence serves no purpose to me. Either they say, well, you, we are not commenting effectiveness, we don't understand what you know, that would be negative, right?
I would think they're just general liability, like, cover their tush kind of questions. So basically, statements to say, like, we're not commenting on how they did anything. If anything shows up...
And what is good and bad.
Pretty much. They're, you know, just, they're not going to say for certainty 100% that everything was recorded accurately and timely, but it's their, in their opinion, that it is for the most part from what they're seeing that we're presenting to them.
Now, we trust you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that's very typical in an audit, and that's how it's done.
Correct.
I don't want any...
And as he did state...
They pull sample transactions, they audit those, and they're saying...
That's how an audit generally works.
Correct.
Accepted accounting principles.
And as he did say, we did receive an unmodified opinion, which is generally referred to as a clean opinion, which is the highest opinion that you can get for these audit reports.
I just wanted to be clear for posterity. Okay, that brings us to board comments. Oh, sorry, no, we have our second public comment period, but I don't know if any, anyone in our audience would like to comment. Okay. Then we will move on to board comments.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Margaret, and I just wanted to congratulate Chris. I was looking at your budget, and you created $2 million surplus from last year, and I think that's amazing, so thank you. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Kavanaugh for his presentation. I loved the team approach and how you're proactive with academic and mental health issues in our kids, helping them be as successful as possible. So thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I also want to thank Chris for the work in getting those 2023-24 financial audits done with the unmodified opinion, which, again, is the top marks.
Thank you.
It's a strange way of putting it, but it's accounting language. I think that your stewardship of the financial side of the district's work is really important, and I just want to express gratitude to you for that, paying attention, paying close attention to all of those accounting issues. Also, thanks to Phil and the entire wellness team. I echo what Margaret had to say. I think that by incorporating this approach to social and wellness being at the youngest age with our kids helps to de-stigmatize mental health issues and helps create an environment where people can talk about these things without feeling the stigma of these types of mental health issues that was certainly the way it was when I was a kid. So I want to thank you for that. I think by setting this, by teaching these kids that we can talk about mental health issues, we can talk about wellness, we can talk about mindfulness, we can talk about what's going on inside, will help our entire community down the road to avoid a lot of trauma and pain for people. So I think that's wonderful, and I really think it's great that this district puts the effort into that. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, last week, I was at the Somers Education Foundation Hall of Fame Awards Dinner. I think this community, just by having an organization like SEF behind us, working with us, just as our PTAs do, there's a wonderful amount of community support and involvement at different levels through these different organizations, and I think it was really, really wonderful evening. It was a great opportunity to present that Hall of Fame awards to Katie Winter and Meg Benedetto from Primrose, and also Mark Baer from the high school for his work as an educator in the district. So again, I want to congratulate them, and I want to, again, thank SEF for the important work that they do in supporting our children and our schools.
I guess this'll be an echo chamber. Thank you, Chris. Great job, as always. And thank you, Phil, for the presentation. Very informative, and thank you for taking the time to explain all that to everybody. Thank you.
Yefe, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'd like to urge everybody in the community to pay attention to the search process, and that's why I mentioned the website. We hope that we will post as soon as we get the survey results and that some data that from the public. I think the whole process is, it's not that long. I mean, pretty soon, the months pass by, you know, things will happen, but the community should really pay attention during this couple of months' time. I think searching superintendent is probably the most important job for our school district, okay? So that's my opinion. And secondly, I also, you know, after hearing Phil's, you know, presentation, I always question about is how do we sort of get indicators for these things that we really wanted to do and get results? For example, like global citizenship. How do we get indicators that to show that our students really, you know, into the global citizenship that somehow is demonstratable, okay? I had some offline contact with Phil, will continue to do that, see whether it's something we could do really make our program really sort of visible. We have concrete indicators to show that our district is making really good progress for our students. Thank you.
Thanks. Let's see, first off, thank you, Chris, for the excellent audit report, you know, your ability to compact all these numbers and have a ever-moving, like, you know, everything's moving around in this district, and I just, you always have such a command of everything, so I appreciate it, and it shows in the fact that we had such a great audit report. It's a busy couple of weeks. I also attended the SEF dinner with Daryl. I know Yefe was there as well, and it's so great to see our educators being celebrated and to have that partnership with them. And congratulations again to Katie and Meg and Mark. We also had our first Cewak meeting of the year last week, and I'm on that as a board member and community member and parent, and it's just so great to see everybody in that room committed to knowing that social-emotional wellness for kids is such a foundation to be able to enter the classroom and have that ability to learn. And I think that while it may be hard to quantify, it shows, and I think that we have a great system in place, and that was just, and it shows for me going to this NISBA convention, which leads me into my next part, is of going to these sessions for the last three days and interacting with other boards and interacting with, you know, they have a whole expo hall set up for you to go to and talk with different providers and things. It was great to see how on top of the ball we are with so many things, and one of those is social-emotional wellness and some other stuff I will be referring over to both Stacy Elkhannon and Liz Turner for some of the literacy work that we've been doing. It's just clear how far ahead of the curve we are on so many things here in this district. And that is looking throughout the whole state now and on these sessions. So there's a lot to share that Harry and I will probably be working on for the next week or so, but it's, it really is a testament to all the work that you guys are doing, and it definitely shows, and I, it was, it's nice to kind of have it seen when you're outside of your own bubble and see it at a level where you can kind of look at other school districts and, okay, what are they doing and how are we doing this? And I also got some great tips on, and working with, going forward with the next Capitol bomb project, so we'll be sitting down for that as well. So it'll be very exciting stuff. And I know Harry's going to bring this up, but it's School Board Recognition Week, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for serving. I know it's a volunteer job, and we put a lot of time into it, especially this year. And again, I just want to thank everyone for the community feedback portion of the superintendent search, and now the board's going to take that data and find the best candidate, hopefully, so, okay.
Thanks for stealing my thunder, but...
Sorry.
I'm going to echo several of the comments that have been heard. Thanks, Phil, to you and the Learning Office and the SEL staff for the presentation this evening and updating the second component of our Forward in Excellence Report. Reluctantly, I want to thank Chris and his staff for the work preparing for the audit. I've worked in a number of districts over the past 50 years. I've worked in a number of assistant soup for business, and Chris has to be one of the best that I have worked with, and I mean that sincerely. I'd also like to congratulate Katie Winter, Meg Benedetto, and Mark Baer for their induction into the Somers Education Foundation Hall of Fame last week, and thank the SEF for their continued support of the Somers Central School District. Jimmy mentioned in his report that the tennis courts are completed. They are. They were opened yesterday afternoon. The girls had an opportunity to have an exhibition match against Yorktown or with Yorktown.
Yorktown and Brewster.
And Brewster?
Yep, Brewster came too.
Terrific. So we have some pictures that are available. If they're not on the website yet, they will be. Chris took some, and...
They're not in action, but they, if you open up our website right now...
You can see them.
The courts are front and center.
And Mark Adam has some also. I'd also like to thank Rebecca Rossiopoe, Eric Woolsey, Ian Smith, Kirsten Reynolds, Tricia Baldes, Laura Pandolus, Carmen Quinn, Daniel Drebitz, Dawn Sandsuck, Rob Pelmeno, Jenna Scatino, and Curtis Dell at SMS for opening up their WIN classes to the Board of Education Administration on their walk-through last Wednesday. We all visited a number of WIN periods for 6th and 8th grade, and that was very informative, very interesting. I'd like to thank the Somers Central School District staff and community members who participated in the superintendent search by completing the survey document and the various virtual and in-person interviews with the search team, as Amanda said. I'd like to thank Amanda for attending the New York State School Boards Conference in New York City with me this week. We participated in many valuable presentations and discussions, as well as interacting with colleagues from all over New York State. I've already started to share some of the information from sessions that I attended, the slide packs for several of those I've sent out and clogging my administrators' inboxes, but they're valuable information that I wanted to share, and there will be more coming. And lastly, October 14th through the 18th was designated as School Board Recognition Week by the New York State School Boards Association. School Board members take on one of the most important citizen responsibilities, overseeing the education of the community's youth. Boards of education guide their local school systems and ensure public schools are flexible and responsive to the needs of the community. They are volunteers who dedicate their time to improving public education, and those who have served in this role know that it is a lot of time and a lot of work. So in recognition of School Board Recognition Week, I have presented each of the school board members with a certificate of appreciation to thank them for their commitment to the public education and the Somers Central School District. Well-deserved, and having served as a board member in another district for eight years, as well as on the administrative side, I know the amount of time and energy and time away from family that this work requires, and I appreciate each and every one of you for what you do. So thank you very much. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, before we end, I'd just like to say also, go Yankees. Sorry, Phil, but resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Thank you, everyone.